Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I'd like to call to order the July 5th, 2022 meeting of the Indian River County Board of County Commissioners. As you can see this morning, our chairman is not here. He is, he is out, he's absent. He's out sick or injured. It's yet to be determined. So we wish him the best, and I'm sure he'll be back and be just fine. So we'll start out with the invocation this morning presented by our own clerk of the court and comptroller, the Honorable Jeffrey Smith, then followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Joe Fleischer. But first, we have a moment of silence for our first responders and members of the armed forces. Everybody please rise.
Oh, Lord, our Lord, how majestic is your name in all the earth. Lord, we just celebrated a birthday for this country, and you know the shape of it. Lord, you know our hearts. Lord, just ask us, we just ask you to help us to see you, seek you, and turn away from our sins so that you can heal this land. Lord, we ask a special blessing on the chairman as he had an incident over the weekend. We pray that he will recover quickly and be back with us. Lord, we also ask for your guidance for these men and women who have to make decisions this month. Lord, give them your special wisdom. And, Lord, we ask for blessing for all the first responders and the military men and women all around the world. These things we pray in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have just celebrated our independence as a free nation, so let's make it loud and proud. Please join with me in a pledge of allegiance to the greatest nation on earth, the United States of America, land of the free because of the brave. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you. Commissioners, we'll move straight to item four. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, move approval.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleischer, seconded by Commissioner Adams. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, you did. I'm sorry. Y'all got to speak up. I'm hard to hear.
Okay. I'm trying to say.
Okay. Okay, so rephrase that then. Motion by Commissioner Fleischer, seconded by Commissioner Moss. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously four zero. Proclamations and presentations. We have a presentation of proclamation honoring Jason Burdette on his retirement from the Indian River County Sheriff's Office, and that will be presented by Commissioner Fleischer.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the privilege and honor. I did have the opportunity, experience, and honor to work with Jason Burdette. And I have to say that during, during that time, he was a go-to guy. He knew what was going on. He knew his commitment. He knew what had to be done. And I could always call upon him because we worked in separate worlds at one point, and it was a different world. These fine individuals that are before us do something that's incredible, and it's an arduous task. It's difficult. They're not out and about. They're kind of contained. And they're doing something that a lot of people truly don't understand. And I have to say that Jason understood it. He understood the responsibility, and he spread that knowledge to others. And that's, that's key because he's now decided to retire. And I wish that he has success in that retirement and that, but we talked about it earlier, there is a separation of the duty and responsibility that you always feel. And the last time you put that uniform on, and you notice that he's not wearing the glass B uniform. He's already started his retirement. With that, Jason, I'm going to read this proclamation honoring Jason Burdette on his retirement from the Indian River County Sheriff's Office. Whereas Sergeant Jason Burdette is retiring from the Indian River County Sheriff's Office effective July 8th, 2022. And whereas Jason began his journey in law enforcement in 1997 and has served with distinction for 25 years, working diligently under the sheriffs to protect and serve the citizens of Indian River County and the state of Florida. Whereas Jason's many years of experience demonstrated the ability for leadership and irreproachable professionalism duly resulted in his promotion to the rank of sergeant. And whereas, over his tenure, Jason has received many acknowledgements and commendations for his efforts, including the exceptional duty, tactical Going the Extra Mile Awards, and honors for saving, for lifesaving efforts. Whereas Jason's remarkable dedication to his profession has earned him the appreciation of Sheriff Eric Flowers and all those who he had the pleasure of working with him. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that the Board lords the contributions that Sergeant Jason Burdette has made to the citizens of Indian River County during his highly successful law enforcement career, and wishes him a happy and prosperous retirement. This is duly adopted on the fifth day of July 2022, and it is signed by all five county commissioners. Jason.
I'd like to thank the commission. I'd like to thank the sheriff and the command staff next to me. Especially, the commission has always been here for our first responders. One of the things that in my career I've learned is, and I know Commissioner Fleischer will tell you, is we have a brotherhood, and the brotherhood backs each other. We stand behind each other, and we, we always want to go home together at the end of our shift. I spent 25-plus years at the agency. I've seen a lot of things throughout my career. We discussed earlier. But the biggest thing I take away is I never took it home. There's always a distinction there. And I've always been there for my family. To me, family comes first, and my brotherhood comes second. I will pray every day in my career, my next career phase, that each of my brothers and sisters, they stay safe, and I will always back them till the cows come home. So again, thank you, commissioners, Mr. Smith, state attorneys. You guys are incredible, and we couldn't do it without you. So thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Jason, is somebody with you?
My spouse, Kristi.
Congratulations, Kristi. So, and is that a list you have there? Kristi, you have a list in your pocket?
Oh, no.
Well, you could start one today. There you go.
Commissioner, I would just like to thank Jason and all the corrections officers that came over from the jail to work in the courthouse. They've done an excellent job, and they've been very well received, and they've done a, they've, they've been led by a great LT, and so I wish Jason all the best in his retirement. Thank you.
Sheriff?
Commissioners, thank you for pausing today to recognize Sergeant Burdette. When I took office as sheriff, I recognized that we needed to bring our folks over who were retiring and let the community know that these folks serve honorably every day. We have retirements, and people just ultimately fade away, and they don't get to be heard. And so I'm so happy that we're able to do this, that you guys are able to pause for a few minutes and take time to recognize somebody like Sergeant Burdette, who did 25 years at the agency. I'm sure he'll tell you, it goes by in a blink of an eye. But thank you for doing that. Thank you to Sergeant Burdette for his service to the citizens of Indian River County. And just, folks, please be careful out there. You know, yesterday we had the Fourth of July. We've got a lot going on. Jason, in your retirement, please watch out for, you know, us, and please keep us in your prayers. You guys have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Jason.
Anybody else? All right, all right.
Congratulations. Thanks for joining us. This is great.
You guys don't want to?
Yeah.
Wait a second. Commissioner Fleischer in the photo.
Thank you. Once again. That was okay.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you, sir.
All right. The list. Sheriff, congratulations.
Hey, Sheriff, great to see you.
Good to see you again, Captain. Thanks for joining us.
What we do? Okay. I'll check my calendar.
Yes.
Yep, there we are.
Thank you.
Now on my calendar.
Hey, I got a second wave.
We got a second one.
All right, thanks so much. Thank you, Commissioner Fleischer. Item seven, information items from staff or commissioners not requiring board action. There is a couple of things that I want to bring up on this. I would, in Commissioner O'Brien's honor, we'll talk about the venue calendar. First of all, the, one of the most important things, Jason, you want to comment on this, on the 2022 State of the County Luncheon coming this Friday? At 11:30?
Yes, 11:30 at the IG Center. We will have the State of the County. Commissioner O'Brien, I anticipate, will be there, and, and as will I, so.
And then also something near and dear to my heart, where the Florida Half-Century 16-and-over softball tournament will be held this weekend at Dick Bird South County Park and for Ann B. Adams North County Park. I think they're having one more park down in Port St. Lucie, so that's by benefit and thanks to the Trejo Cross Sports Commission of getting these folks to show up for this. It's always a, it's always a big thing. So the next thing I want to mention is the FAC, Florida Association County Conferences, that Commissioner O'Brien, myself, Commissioner Adams, and Commissioner Moss attended this weekend, this past week, I'm sorry. Commissioner Moss and I received our Advanced County Commissioner Certification. Commissioner Adams got her Advanced County Commissioner II Certification, and she was also reelected unanimously by District 29 to serve on the board, correct? What else did I miss? Anything for that?
We learned a lot.
We did.
And had fun.
We did. We had a good time. We talked to a lot of, a lot of people southern than that. It was, it was, it was a good week. So we missed you there, Mish.
Well, somebody had to be here.
That's true.
For the calls.
That's true. All right, moving on to item eight. Commissioners, anybody want to pull anything or from the agenda or talk about it? Anybody from the audience want to pull an item on the consent agenda for discussion?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve.
Hearing none. I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer to accept. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Adams, second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Hearing none, motion passes four zero. Nothing on item nine, constitutional officers and government agencies. The next we'll have open item 10, a public hearing. And the public hearing is?
Mr. Phil, welcome back.
10A1, Authorization to Submit Fiscal Year 2022 Application for Federal Transit Administration Grants for Capital and Operating Assistance, Sections 5307 and Bus Replacement Section 5339. It's administrative inaction. And I see we have not only the MPO Director, but the former MPO Director here present to, to present this public hearing. So, gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Yes. Good morning. Brian Freeman, MPO Staff Director and MPO alumnus. Phil Mattson is right there. And I have here a short presentation for you today. And basically, you know, the public, I hit the wrong button there. There we go. The, our public transportation system here in Indian River County really is a partnership. And on the local side, there is the county, which is the grantee. And then we have the Senior Resource Association, which operates the Go Line, the Community Coach, Chris Stevenson, with the Senior Resource Association is here today. And then also helping on the planning side is the MPO. And then our state and, oops. Is it this button? There we go. Sorry, I'm having a little bit of issues with it. It's me.
The buses work better than the changer.
On the funding side, we have our state and federal partners at FDOT, the State Commission for the Transportation Disadvantaged, and the Federal Transit Administration. And the item we're looking at here today is the funding we get from FTA, which is the single largest component in the funding picture for the transportation system. The Go Line has 14 routes. They operate six days a week. 51% of the county lives within a quarter mile of a Go Line route. And if you expand that out to three quarters of a mile of all the Go Line routes, we actually pick up 84% of all residents of Indian River County. And what this slide shows is just kind of the ridership picture on the Go Line going back to the year 2000. And generally, it's been a story of continuous increase in the ridership on the Go Line. We had a small dip in ridership back in 2020 because of COVID, but it is since rebounding from that. And it looks like we'll see ridership levels around what we were seeing before COVID for the year that's going to be finishing soon. And that's about 1.2 passengers on an annual basis using the Go Line. This chart is something that we're really, an item that we're very proud of here, and that's on a cost-per-passenger basis, the Go Line is the most efficient system in the entire state of Florida. And we've been running neck and neck with Gainesville. These numbers are for the year 2020, which kind of accommodates for some of the ridership impacts from there. And actually, you can see, we've kind of put a little bit of distance between ourselves and Gainesville in the cost-per-passenger basis. So that is something that, that we're definitely very, you know, happy to see that it's such an efficient system. Just looking at the grant application this year, it's a little over $3.8 million. Most of that's from the 5307 program, and then got a little under half a million from the 5339 bus replacement program. As far as the capital assistance portion, it's a little over $2.25 million. One thing to note about this is that there's no local funding required for the capital side of the system. We use toll revenue credits that are provided to us from FDOT as a soft match, so we don't have to match any local dollars on the capital side. And then on the operating assistance, a little over $1.5 million are included. No additional local monies are needed for this because we're able to use funds that are already programmed for the state grants that we receive. And there's a three-to-one ratio that we like to highlight, that for every $1 of local money that's put towards the transit system, we bring in $3 of state and federal money. So it's a good return on our local investment in the system. And so at this point, a recommendation is to consider any public comment today and adopt the proposed resolution for the grant application.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yes, if we can go back to the presentation, Brian?
Yes.
Something struck me when, when you had, when you stated that we were the most efficient, we were on the top there. And I was reading alongside the counties. We're often compared to another county that's right at the bottom of the chart. Is, is that $15?
Yeah, actually, I think it's around $18 per trip for the Martin County system. And it really, it just comes down to that it's, there's not much usage of their system. And so for what they're spending to run their system, and not having many passengers on it, that cost per passenger is at the highest in the state.
So you attribute that to the increased usage and the efficiency and the fuel and the operation and route numbers?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, definitely the high usage levels that we see here on the system, I think, are the main. You know, when you divide the cost by the number of passengers, it's a much better, you know, return that we're seeing in Indian River County.
My two cents on this, too. To Martin County's credit, be a devil's advocate a bit, they've come and visited us. They've visited me. They've visited Karen, Brian. What do you do? What's your secret? How do you run your system? How is it structured? So I think they're trying to improve. I mean, nobody wants to be on the bottom of this chart. We have a few natural advantages up here, besides the fact that we have an excellent, excellent partnership with our transit provider, the Senior Resource Association. I'll point out Chris in the back here, their transportation manager. We actually are the CTC for Martin County now, correct, Chris? The, so we help run their door-to-door system, but not their fixed route system. So hopefully, that expertise could bleed over and help Martin County because we all do exist as a region. But a couple of advantages we have, I got to credit the looming figure in the back looking at his phone, Rich. We have very little congestion here. Our traffic system works very well. We're laid out on a nice grid. Martin County, they have to slog it through on Martin Downs Boulevard, Monterey Road, a lot of angular roads. Things are not channelized well like ours are. The fact that you don't have background traffic means your buses can make their appointed headways very well, very easily. So there's a lot of reasons we, we perform so superiorly. Most of it's attributed to our transit operator partnership. And of course, Brian, can't say enough about, he does an excellent job.
And once again, not pointing it out because, hey, look who's on the bottom. It's, it was a matter of, look how drastic the, the cost factor is.
It's something, yeah.
Then we're, we're often compared because of population and, and basically everything we do is, is correlated as far as demographics. And I just, it just struck me.
It's a great point.
I can tell you all, as, you know, being born and raised here, I never thought we'd see public transportation basically in Indian River County, let alone over one million, over 1 million trips per year on our public transportation. That's absolutely, I find that absolutely amazing to me, so.
The most heartwarming thing to me is, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's attributed to the good job that everybody does, between you guys and Chris and Karen over there at SRA. It's, it's just, it's, it's well-run. And we see it, we get, as y'all know, we get into the finer points with the transportation disadvantaged part of it. We hear the, the finer details of it, and it's always impressive.
Well, I believe it was about 25 years ago, the transportation system here was comprised of about five, 15-passenger Econoline vans with seats and seatbelts. And they, they made irregular route stops. They weren't signed, and they just picked up people and dropped off people when they could, they could, when available, if available. And they really had no design on the, on them. They were just white passenger vans.
Right. Exactly.
Still remembers.
It's really transformative. You know, the anecdote I tell, I was teaching my son to drive. He rode the Go Line for two years because he'd stay for extracurriculars and stuff. While I was teaching him to drive, and there were about 20 kids at the Sebastian High School bus stop, and he waves to them, they're, oh, hey, Dylan's driving, look. So who are those guys? It was about four or five o'clock. They're all on the soccer team. They're trying to get back to Felsmere, and they have no transportation there. Their parents work. So, you know, it gave them an opportunity to kind of get involved in an activity, which was very, I think, wholesome and positive. And they wouldn't have had it without, you know, the availability of the system, so.
Got a great system.
Anything else, Commissioners?
I just echo everything Commissioner Fleischer said.
With that, well, up in the public hearing, anybody from the audience wish to comment? Councilman Jones? Anybody? Go Line goes right through Sebastian.
Hey, thanks, since you called me out. On the Go Line issue, though, on a serious note, years ago, I predicted that we would have big buses here because of the way things were run. And the city manager and I of Sebastian had the opportunity several weeks ago to go on one of the Go Line rides to understand how it operates and things like that. And it was amazing. I was asking a lot of questions about the security, the cameras, the routes, how do people get on it? They said they have an app that you can load, so you don't have to wait. I, I thought that was awesome. So the Go Line is great here in Indian River County. Thank you guys so much for what you do.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to comment? Seeing none, we close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
If there's no further discussion, I'd be happy to move approval.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Adams and a second by Commissioner Fleischer. For approval, the item is presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing none, passes four zero. Great job, fellas.
In the old okay.
All right, let's move on to 10A2. This is a consideration of the Land Development Regulation, LDR amendments to Section 971.41, modifying the criteria for accessory dwelling units in its legislative nature. Mr. Mattson?
Brian Freeman will be presenting these as well. He's on a roll. And of course, Brian was, prior to his incarnation as MPO Director, was a current development planner managing the LDR. So he has good insight into both. Go ahead, Brian.
Yes, good morning. Got me for a second item this morning. And you might remember that the MPO kicked off a visioning study back in the fall. I've had a lot of workshops all around the community over the last several months on that. And this is really the first action or implementation item that's coming before you from that visioning study. And just first, kind of wanted to define what is an accessory, single-family dwelling unit, or ADU, as they're often called. And in our LDRs, Chapter 901, there is a definition there. I'm not going to read the definition itself, but I just kind of want to highlight the three key points are, one, it's a second dwelling unit on a single-family lot. Two, it could be attached to or separate from the, the first or principal dwelling unit. Maybe it's a part of the garage or just a separate structure. And the third is that we have criteria for them in Chapter 971 of our code. And just looking at some of the changes to those criteria in Chapter 971, what, basically what this is allowing is a modest increase in the size of accessory dwelling units with a few other changes as well. Right now, they're limited to 33% of the heated or air-conditioned floor area of the primary residence, or 750 square feet, whichever is less. And so what this code change is going to increase those limits somewhat to 50% of the size of the main residence, or 1,000 square feet, or on larger lots, actually up to 1,200 square feet as a maximum. So we're seeing a little bit of an increase in the size of the accessory dwelling units. Also, there's a couple of provisions in here for lots that are five acres or larger. This is actually something that was requested by the Planning and Zoning Commission back when we had a visioning workshop with them in February. They allow a second accessory dwelling unit up to 600 square feet on those five-acre and larger, mainly agriculturally-zoned lots. And also, we're increasing the separation or maximum separation that's allowed between the units on the larger properties to up to 150 feet. So that's the maximum distance the, the different dwellings can be from each other. We do have a few prohibitions that are being added to the code for accessory dwelling units. This is mainly just to kind of preserve the residential character of neighborhoods. One is that no ADUs can be operated as a vacation rental. Another one is that there cannot be any commercial use or home occupation run out of the accessory dwelling unit. And then the last one is that there cannot be any mobile homes or RVs that are used as an accessory dwelling unit. So I mentioned the visioning study. We've actually brought this So I mentioned the visioning study, we've actually brought this up to many of the workshops, you can see on the screen here, some of the different workshops we've had around the community. Really, it's just been, I would say unanimously positive reception to these proposed code changes from the public at these different meetings where this has been mentioned. And also, one other concept I wanna introduce today is that we're applying to this what we call the VIP treatment, and in this case, VIP stands for Visioning Implementation Principles. And so, what you can see on the screen there is a matrix of the different visioning principles that have come out of the study, and it's staff's view that this code change really supports all of those principles, especially supports the one on providing a diversity of housing types that include affordable options, so we gave that one two checkmarks, instead of just one checkmark, like all the others. And so, at this point, is the recommendation of both staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission, that the Board of County Commissioners adopt their proposed changes to Chapter 971 for accessory dwelling units, and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioners, any questions?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. With regard to businesses being operated from these units, if the person who owns the primary residence has his or her own business, is that doable from the accessory unit?
Well, from the principal unit, so that the owner, if they're living in the primary residence on the property, could continue to have a home business out of the, as the code allows, out of that, the primary unit, but with the accessory unit, and it being smaller in size, to kinda just keep it residential character, that's why we're proposing that the accessory unit not have.
So it's no, no business use, then?
In, only for the accessory unit.
Pardon me?
No business in the accessory unit. You can have a business in the primary unit.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Question, how do you monitor and/or enforce the vacation rental aspect?
We, we subscribe to a number of services which reconcile advertised listings from VRBO, and the major, you know, Airbnbs, and the major places that are promoting these to the public, and then reconciles it with their list of approved short-term vacation rental addresses, and when it finds discrepancies, it reports it to us, and we start a code enforcement action. So we have a pretty good system, we've come a long way to become on top of that, it works really, really well, and other than that, we are, there are certain preemptions to on us on short-term vacation rental of your home, primary home, doesn't apply to these, because we can, we have the ability to put this out on the STVR, on the accessory dwelling unit, we don't have that same ability on the primary home. All we can regulate is parking, number of persons per household, registration and inspection, and taxes. So those are the things we can do on the short-term vacation rentals, but it's an excellent question. We, you can also rent, you can rent long-term the accessory dwelling unit, and that's where it gets the two checkmarks on our VIP Matrix, Visioning Implementation Principles. So, we had a planner who we hired right out of school, and she rented somebody's accessory dwelling unit. The problem we've had, this comes the closest thing to the, kinda the perfect LDR amendment that I could think of, that having been said, you know, usually opens the door to a couple of questions, but we have it now, we've had it on the books for twenty years, accessory dwelling units. We're ahead of a lot of jurisdictions in that regard. We approve about forty a year. We haven't had a single complaint. Whenever we have code enforcement issues, it's not about the STVR, pardon me, it's not about the accessory dwelling unit. So, we've had a great track record with it, the one complaint that we've had is our size limitation. So right now, if you have a twelve-hundred-square-foot home, and you wanna build a mother-in-law suite, or something for, you know, to care for a senior relative, or a college student, let them rent it out, you can only go four-hundred feet, and that's tiny. That's almost not even worth your money to put the infrastructure and utilities in. So, we're now liberalizing that, we're letting you go up to fifty percent of the size of the square, now that same person will be able to get a six-hundred-square-foot unit in now. We have all the buffering and other safeguards in place, and one thing I've learned, in our ag areas, we have a lot of farmers and, you know, farm maintenance equipment businesses and things like this, that are multi-generational, and they like the idea of being able to have, you know, their children, or their grandkids, or somebody, you know, living out there, working the business, and having another option for living there, and legitimizing that option, so.
Now, I really do like the, the concept of having the ability to have a second accessory dwelling unit on those larger lots, over five acres. I think you're absolutely right, there's, there's people that wanna kinda create, or have created these family compounds, for lack of a better word, and that gives them opportunities and an ability to do that. And then the larger size, I think, is just more realistic in this day and age, and then that extra setback, if you have the space to do that, you can put it a little bit further away, while still staying within the parameters, the one-hundred-and-fifty feet, you know, it allows for the accessory dwelling unit, but also creates a bit of privacy between the two, because even if it's built for your, your mother, or your mother-in-law, you don't necessarily want them right outside your.
Yeah, you want more space.
Not that we don't all love them.
These are the factors.
Commissioner Fleischer?
No, I'm good. Commissioner Adams, company.
Now, are we talking two different things versus, say, if my son wanted to build a, I live at, let's say I live at a twenty-one-hundred-square-foot house, he wants to build a two-thousand, twenty-five-hundred-square-foot house, that's talking about separating land, this is talking about accessory, this is like a mother-in-law cottage, or something like that.
Exactly. We have two flavors of a second house you can put on your property now. The two flavors are, the first is accessory dwelling unit, this is for permanent occupancy or rental, this is where your parents want to live with you permanently, or maybe nine months a year, and then go up north for three months. This has a limitation on the size. The second is called a guest cottage. You have to file a legal affidavit that it's for just temporary intermittent use, this is for somebody coming and visiting. We don't have a size limitation on the guest cottage. So, those are our two LDR amendments now, we're not touching the guest cottage provision, we get a few of those a year, too. That's usually like, sorta where you're going out on the five-acre ranchettes out west, with the really nice horse farms and things, and you see another, like, very pretty house next to it, that's for somebody who flies in, this is their, you know, hobby farm, and they wanna have, you know, a family and the kids stay in a separate house. This is more of the mother-in-law suite in the conventional sense, the on-premises, permanent living arrangement.
How did we come up with the six-hundred square feet, again?
Mostly, it's not six-hundred at the limit, you wanna pull up the rule?
Yeah, so that would be for the second accessory dwelling unit, and, was it me again?
You got the control over in your hand, Brian.
Yeah, so this is just for a lot that are five acres and larger, and this would be, that six-hundred square foot's just for that second dwelling unit on those lots, because the other ones could be up to twelve-hundred square feet, so it's just to kinda, kinda set that as kinda like a junior, or a, a unit that's not quite the same scale as the other one, just to kinda have.
We're walking kind of a thin line between allowing a family-oriented compound on a agricultural parcel, and letting somebody backdoor into a poor man subdivision, without what we need for a subdivision. What we need for a subdivision is the ability to get emergency vehicles in there, you know, maybe certain utilities, maybe street lighting. We don't wanna make them provide too much, and make them do a full-blown subdivision, if it's simply this family concept, so we wanna put a restriction on it, so it doesn't become, you know, a backdoor entree into three twenty-five-hundred-square-foot homes, without having to go through any of the subdivision process. So that's, that's what we came up with.
Site plan would determine that.
Right.
I just wonder, a six-hundred, why not a thousand square foot?
Six-hundred went over pretty well, it was actually one of the agricultural-type persons on the P&amp;Z who recommended it, so he thought this was the good working compromise. Your first one can be up to fifty percent of the size of the primary house. So, let's say you have a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot house out there, your first one's twelve-hundred feet, your second one's six-hundred, so it's sort of a subordination.
I just wanted to know, we can do that. Commissioners, anything else for staff?
I got it.
Second, I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing's now open. Yes, sir, please come up, give your name and address for the record, if you would, please.
My name is Kevin Beverley, at thirty-two, thirty-six, Fifty-Ninth Avenue, Beryl Beach. And I'm sorry the way I speak, but I got dulls, palsy, so I say certain words funny. But, the thing is, my wife and I, we bought our property right behind King's Baptist Church, and it has a mother-in-law suite, or a guest home, on it, and thinking that our parents are gonna stay there when they get older, unfortunately, you know, my parents passed away, her mom passed away, and, but Rob and I, Rob is my wife, we have a very, very sick child, and I did take some pictures of my guest home, I don't know if I can raise up to you guys or not.
We have this overhead, I haven't used it in years.
I've never done it before, so.
You're doing great.
But, but the thing is, the rule and regulation on these, and I've done everything the county asked me to do, and I run a different company here in town, I do a mobile car detailing service, and I run a very good, respectable company, and I try to do everything honest. My dad was a preacher, and he said honesty is everything, and I prayed for this day, so I could come in and speak to y'all, and, but the thing is, if you, this is my home, but you have an ordinance in this county that you can't rent anything over seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet for income, well, I did everything that the county asked me to do, and then all of a sudden, they come up with this, call this guidance, that you can't rent anything over seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet. My, this home is, is nine-hundred-and-sixty square feet under air, and the purpose that I bought this place, because I came from Ohio, 'cause I have a very sick child, and I had to get her into a warmer environment, that someday we can rent this out for additional income, because just one of her medications is ninety-eight-hundred dollars a month. I gotta do a lot of cars for ninety-eight-hundred dollars a month. If, if something happens to me, that my wife, she can't work, and she needs something like this for some income, so she could still support our child, and, and, so then, you know, Kelly, at the County Commissioner of Code Enforcement, she, her and I talked, and she says you have to take it off of Airbnb. I said, that's fine, I said, I understand, but I said, Kelly, you know, and I know, there's people out here doing this stuff, under the radar, and nothing's being done about it or said about it. I'm just trying to be honest, and pay the taxes. Everybody wins on Airbnb. The county gets their four percent from Airbnb for the taxes, the state of Florida, all the mom-and-pop shops, the restaurants, people bring revenue into our county. Our county, when I come off of ninety-five, and I walk, and I come driving in, and says, welcome to Indian River County, I am proud of that, I am very proud of that. And if we have, I mean, my wife and I, we went to, had a picnic with our girls yesterday, over on the beach, man, I tell you, I was very proud of our community. And I'm not trying to take money out of this county, I'm trying to bring revenue into this county. And, but the thing is, so I asked, you know, this is nine-hundred-and-sixty square feet under air, and, you know, I'm fifty-three years old, I already had three heart attacks, and the doctor says it's because of my daughter's illness, that I'm under stress, if something happens to me, I gotta make sure my wife is able to take care of our disabled child. And then you have another rule and regulation, it cannot be closer, and I'll show it to you, if I may, I take this off, please. There's from the road, so you can't see any, any of the doors, the doors face the north, this faces the west, and it has its own private driveway, nice little setup, and then there's the driveway, right there, they can have their own parking, and it butts up to a horse farm right behind, and then the last one, that's how close, you have an ordinance that it cannot be fifteen feet from the main dwelling. Well, mine is fourteen feet, five inches. You know, I don't wanna have to take a sledgehammer, start breaking stuff off to make it fifteen feet, you know, and then you have an ordinance that you cannot rent a guest home, or a mother-in-law suite for income. I beg and plead with you guys, please, do emergency adoption, where I could rent this out on Airbnb to, to support my, my daughter, and to help her out, and if something happens to me, that my wife can be able to continue on living in Indian River County, we don't, she won't have to move back up north where it's cold, and, you know, my daughter has a lot of seizures, and, and Robin has to stay home with her. I'm the only one providing for my family, but if we can rent this out as an Airbnb, or a VRBO, we're bringing money into this county. Every single person in this, in this room, and out there in our community, benefits from people coming from up north, or anywhere in the, in the, in the world, they bring money into here, and they spend their money here. Yes, today's economy, and the gas prices are outrageous, but there's two things that people, actually, three things people are gonna do, go on vacation, need a place to stay, and they're gonna go out to eat, because that's entertainment. And I, I've rented Airbnbs before, and I don't know if you guys have or not, but, you know, they're pretty nice, versus a hotel room, and I don't know if you guys have any kids, or sick kids, or not, and I hope to God you don't, 'cause it's no fun, you have to do CPR on your child. It's no fun at all, but I ask and beg and plead with you guys, let me be able to do this, to help my, my family out. And I thank you very much for your time and, and consideration, and hearing me talk, I'm very, I'm very happy, and I thank you guys for doing your jobs, and, and I thank, I thank God for this community, I really do, and I hope and pray that I be able to run a good Airbnb on this, in this community, and the thing is, it's on a dead-end street, it butts up to a horse farm, and I get to, I get to say who comes and who goes into my home, and their county, the county code enforcement, quiet time is ten to six, if they break that rule and regulation, by the, by the codes that Airbnb and VRBO, if they break the house rule, they are asked to leave, and they don't get their money back. It's very, very strict, it's not a party town, you know, you're not coming to my home to throw a party, because I have strict, strict rules and regulations of my home. I take pride in my house, and I, I'll, I'll just ask and plead with you guys, please allow me to be able to rent this as an Airbnb and a VRBO to support my family.
Are you currently renting this out at all?
No, the county shut me down, because they said it has, it's over seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet. So I talked to Commissioner O'Brien, you know, on the phone, and I said, this is what I need to do, and, and I said, I'm a dad, I said, my child depends on me, and I, and I said, this is, this is what I have, and he said, how many square feet is it? I said, under air, it's nine-hundred-and-sixty square feet under air, you know, and, but I just, you know, I need to do something to help my child, and this is a great way to do it, because everybody wins, everybody. The feds win, I gotta pay my taxes, the county, the state, everybody wins, 'cause they're spending money here.
Where does, gentlemen, where does this, where does this fall under the current regulations? We're, I'm not dealing with what we're talking about on the public hearing, but where does this situation fall?
It's a little different, I'll invite Andy to jump in, as the code enforcement expert, but, one, there is precedent that we don't like the second unit to be rented short-term, hotel-style, just because, although Mr. Beverley makes an excellent case, he's done a beautiful job on his, on his second home, and he's no doubt a responsible homeowner regulating it, it's not always gonna be the case, we do have complaints pretty frequently about the short-term vacation rentals, I think some of you on the board have heard some of those complaints. And then, like I said, we distinguish between the accessory dwelling unit, the very small second unit you can build, and the guest cottage, and I think this is where this falls. So we're not changing our rental policies here.
Yeah, that's correct, I can just confirm that, so the, the unit that we are looking at here was approved as a guest house, so it's allowed to be just under the size of the, of the main house, but it does come with a restriction of a document filed in public record that indicates that you can't rent it out for commercial purposes.
Which I don't understand that, and I don't agree with that, and I'm sorry, guys, and I know you're doing your job, but the thing is, if I cannot do this, I might as well tear the house down, because, or move back to Ohio, because I gotta be able to, be able to do this, and if something happens to me, and I pass away, where's that leave my wife? Stranded. If my kids don't have, if my child doesn't have her medication, she could have a seizure, and she could die, if her heart stopped.
Mr. Chair?
I understand, I understand your situation where we're going, and I don't wanna get off, I don't wanna get off the subject of what our public hearing is about.
I understand that.
This may be for another.
Right, yeah.
Another matter, be presented in a, in a, in a different fashion, or look, have, have the code enforcement board look at it, and see if there's any, if there's any.
I wouldn't. You're all welcome to come to my home and look.
I wouldn't disagree with that. I do have a really quick question, just to make sure I understand this particular situation as it relates to guest houses. So a guest house is different than an accessory dwelling unit, and if you are building a guest house, you have to file an affidavit that says that you are not going to rent it out, does that include long-term leases, as well as Airbnb-style renting? So we can't rent it out at all, it's for somebody that's gonna come visit you and stay for the weekend, or a week, or something of that nature, but you're not making any money. something of that nature, but you're not making any monetary payment for it? Is that the basic difference?
Yeah, one of the main distinctions between the two is the guest house is intended for intermittent use, so it's not meant to be permanently occupied, whether that be through rental or somebody living there full-time. So it's, it's a guest house.
And yes, you can't rent the guest house out at all.
Do you have the opportunity to change a guest house to an accessory dwelling unit? Is there a process to do that, so then in the future you could do a long-term rental on it if you wanted to?
Yes, and I think the rules, the rule changes we're looking at here are going to open up more opportunities for that switch to occur, because the size threshold is now going to be higher than it was before.
Because this would fall under the new size threshold, so you could come in and try to make that change, um, so that would open up rental opportunities, not Airbnb rental opportunities, but long-term, like a year lease of some sort type of opportunities? Is that what I'm kind of understanding?
Exactly.
Okay, so I would definitely agree that if that's, maybe that's something, once we are done with this issue, you could work with staff to see your options there, because that will open up some opportunities. And if that's not meeting the needs, then we can always have staff look into it and, and bring something back at a later date for discussion.
You know, excuse me one second. You guys are saying a short term. Now Airbnb, somebody might come down here for just Thursday, and they leave on Sunday. And then, and then you may not have anybody for like two or three weeks or something. If somebody, hey, you know, let's go to this.
The way our regulations work, you would not, you are not able to currently, nor would you be able to in the future, use that as an Airbnb.
Right. But that's why I'm asking, could you please try to amend something that I can do that? Because that is going to help, you know, try to make it, it is something in, in writing that saying that I can do this, so I can pay my taxes and help my daughter out, please.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but I think, um, the, the issue or the concern that the commission and staff has is, while you're like the ideal person to do this and have a great setup and a beautiful location and would run it and manage it in a very professional manner, it sounds like, and you want to do the right thing, we have a whole segment of the community that would take advantage of this, and it would become a major problem as just the regular Airbnbs have in some communities. And, and this would open that door, and I think create bigger issues, not, not you, because you're, you know, the masses always suffer for the sins of the few, as they say. And I think trying to give people the opportunity to rent out the accessory dwelling unit, this will help you switch your guest house to that, which would provide you with some income opportunities. But I think that the Airbnb issue for accessory dwelling units, and I listened to some of the planning and zoning meeting, there was a lot of concern there that this would create more of a slippery slope. So, I mean, that's just my two cents on it, but again, I think once we make this change, if it's approved, that gives you some options. And, and again, if it's still not meeting your needs, we can always have a future discussion. But this should help you get to a closer to the point you're trying to get to.
Sure, but it, but if you change this rule and regulation, I still can't not do an Airbnb or VRBO, that's what you're saying.
Correct, but you could lease out your property, you could lease it out for a long-term lease.
But the thing is, what I'm saying is, and I understand what you're talking about. So if I rent this out for $2,500 a month, all utilities included, I can get that in two weeks versus a whole month. And then the, then the place is not occupied. Let me ask you all something, and, and I'd be willing to work, January, December, January, February, March, four months, that's the hotspot for Vero Beach, for Airbnb. I'd rather rent it for four months, if you all let me, and then leave it, leave it, uh, open for the rest of the year. I don't have a problem with that, because then I can make more money in those four months.
Beverly, I think what we need to do here.
Yes, sir.
Is what Commissioner Adams was referring to. I think we, we, we have to finish the, the business of this land development regulation that we're talking about for adopt staff. I think once, once we do that, then, uh, I think it would, it would behoove you to get with staff and, and, and work, and we could come back and address this i- i- in a different, in a different way at a different time. Uh, I don't think, I hear what you're saying, I think you make a great case, but it's, it doesn't really necessarily, uh, other than what Commissioner Adams says, necessarily apply to what we're doing directly with this particular, uh, issue in regards to the public hearing. Would that be fair to say, Commissioner?
Yes.
Well, can, let me ask you this, because if I give somebody my phone number, could they call me to, to discuss this at a later time?
I'd, I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, the, the, hey, these are the guys, these three guys right here, they are the, they are the...
Let us get through this public hearing, and then give them your phone number, and they'll follow up with you, okay?
All right, thank you so much for taking my time, and I'm sorry it took so much of your time.
That's what we're here for, thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
No problem, great to hear it. Anybody else wish to comment?
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to comment? Hearing no comment, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, your flavor.
Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to move approval of the changes as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Adams, second by Commissioner Fleischer, move approval with regards to this action. Any, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes four zero.
Thank you very much.
All right, do we need to take a break?
No, go ahead. Well, I'll, Dylan's going to read.
Okay, next, we have, uh, we're into the public discussion items, and we go, go to C, and that puts a public notice item, and we'll turn that over to the counselor.
Thank you very much. We have a public notice of a public hearing, which will be held on July 12th, 2022, for an ordinance which will be amending section 204.06 definitions and section 20413 terms of conditions of franchises of part one of part chapter 204, which is our solid waste disposal ordinance of Indian River County. Again, this will be a public hearing, and it'll be held on July 12th, 2022. And with that, I turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you, counselor, great job. Um, next, we'll go to the county administrative matters, 11A, local supports grant medical examiner facilities, and we'll, uh, turn it over to our county administrator, Mr. Brown.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, the District 19 Medical Examiner serves, uh, four county regi- region, including us, St. Lucy, Martin, and Okeechobee Counties. Um, she has expressed a need for a new facility, uh, for the medical examiner function. The staff, or the board did provide direction, um, on, uh, May 3rd of this year to, uh, to work with the other counties and the, uh, medical examiner, uh, regarding the potential for a new facility and funding, uh, and to support funding for that. Uh, pursuant to that, myself along with, uh, the, the chair, um, did meet with, uh, with, with the other counties, Senator Gail Harrell and Representative Dana Tribolsi, um, and IRSC officials, as well as the medical examiner, uh, office, and determined, uh, that we needed to move forward on a PDNE study to determine the design and the needs for, um, a new facility for the medical examiner. The estimated cost of that's about $2 million. Additionally, during the, the most recent session, the legislature created a new initiative, um, for the fiscal year that began, uh, July 1st, and that is the General Appropriations Act for Local Government Support Grants Program. Um, it has been decided after discussion with the, uh, with some of the local delegation, um, that that is the method for which, uh, we should move forward. St. Lucy County has agreed to take the lead on that, and we have agreed to request $1 million in funding under, under that program towards the $2 million cost. Um, so, uh, the, the, St. Lucy County will, will, will be the lead agency on that. They are asking us for, um, commitment for a match, a 50% match, which is not required, but would likely improve the, the chances of getting the funds. And, uh, and we also need a, 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 a letter submitted, signed by the chairman, uh, in support of the submission of the grant. Uh, I will say that we are planning to include $500,000, which is our total cost of, of our share of the $2 million for the PDNE study, um, in the budget that will be released this Friday. Um, so we're, we have a plan to, to fund our share of that, um, and, uh, that is from one cent sales tax. So with that, uh, staff recommends that the board of county commissioners authorize the chair to sign the, to submit a letter, um, as attached, supporting the grant, and authorize staff to submit the local support grant attestation form, uh, to be signed by the county administrator. So with that, I'm available for any questions.
Commissioners, like I said, I've been on the committee, this is one that, that, that we need to move ahead. We don't have a lot of choice in this. It's kind of like when April 15th rolls around, you owe taxes to the federal government. Uh, what are you going to do? But it, but it, but it is definitely needed. I mean, I think Commissioner Fleischer can vouch for this. He's, he's probably been down more recently than I have been, but that facility is, is not good for them, and it's just something we have to do, so.
Do you have a question?
Commissioners, your pleasure.
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer to approve, and a second by Commissioner Adams. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, masses four zero. Now we move on to departmental matters. Community development has none, emergency services, general services, none, we'll move to human resources. Ms. Boyle, we will...
Good morning, Commissioners.
This is a First Amendment, uh, to Surgery Plus Services Agreement, extending one year under a degree of $3 per employee per month for the upcoming year.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Suzanne Boyle, Human Resources Director. And, uh, the amendment that I have before you is amending an agreement that we have with Surgery Plus that we entered into effective July 1st of 2021. Uh, Surgery Plus is an elective program where, uh, those who are insured under our group health plan can access care for elective surgeries with no out-of-pocket costs. And, uh, we were up for a, an increase in our fee, it's called a network, uh, use fee, and it was going to increase from $3 to $4, and I made the request if we could, uh, retain the $3 fee rather than jumping up to $4, and they agreed to that. So we have a 14-month extension on the, uh, discount that we currently enjoy, which will save a little bit over $23,000. And I'm open to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions? Any questions, staff?
I don't, I don't think we should question that.
I don't either.
At all, so I would be happy to move approval before they change their mind.
Right. I'll second it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Adams, second by Commissioner Maston, move staff approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes four zero.
Thank you.
All right. Still in departmental matters, we, from D we move to E, and that's information technology, and I believe, uh, Mr. Russell is here, there he is, he was over there, now he's over there. This is work order number 50, Kimbley Horn and Associates Incorporated Engineering Design Services Administration Complex to the EOC.
Good morning, Commissioners, Dan Russell, Mission Technology Director. I'm here to talk to you this morning about work order 50 for Kimbley Horn and Associates Design Engineering Services. Purpose of work order 50 is retain design engineering services, or engineering design services, excuse me, uh, to support the construction, uh, documents and obtaining jurisdictional approvals for a fiber optic network expansion between our administrative, uh, complex here on 27th Street and our emergency operations center. Uh, this will be 144 strand fiber bundle and provide much-needed, uh, services between these two locations. The consultant will integrate the, uh, the, the infrastructure of the proposed, proposed plan, and, uh, will include the fiber optic infrastructure plans, limited topography, uh, survey, and jurisdictional permitting, as well as franchise utility coordination. Um, the amount of this particular work order is $210,050. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Commissioners, do we have any questions?
This is following up on the expansion we talked about a couple months ago, right? This is putting that into effect essentially?
Uh, that, that as well as supporting, uh, the sheriff's request for access to the traffic camera system.
Okay.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, so, so this is something that will provide additional connectivity, more strands, if you will, um, for connectivity between here and the EOC and those facilities out there. Um, we are advancing this a little quicker to, in order to complete the, the connection, so that the sheriff can hook up to the, to the traffic cameras as, as approved by the board a couple months ago. So, um, this is work that we are, that we need for the connectivity of the entire system, um, and we are advancing that a, a little earlier so that we can accommodate the, the, the traffic camera request from the sheriff.
Fabulous.
Anybody else? Anybody from the public who want to comment?
Yeah, move approval.
Second.
I have a motion for approval by Commissioner Fleischer, second by Commissioner Adams. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes four zero. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
County attorneys matters, we have none. Commissioners matters, nobody has anything. Now we'll move to the special district and boards, there's none on emergency services. And so now it's that time of day where we go to the solid waste disposal district, and Mr. Meta.
Mr. Chairman, move approval.
Second.
We have approval for, we'll do this one at a time, 15B1.
For the final, final page that you need to send.
15B1, I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer, second by Commissioner Adams for approval. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes four zero. 15B2, approval of fiscal year 2023 consumer price index adjustments requested by Atlas Organics, 15B2.
Didn't we just do, um, CPI adjustments for waste management?
Yeah, we did that for waste management at the last meeting, and then the, the next two items are, are additional ones.
And that's part of their contract, that they can come in for it?
They're entitled to these from, in their, in the agreements that we have with them. So this is just the mechanism to, to approve it.
So then I'd be happy to move approval of 15B2.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Adams, second by Commissioner Fleischer to approve 15B2. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes four zero. 15B3, approval of 2023 CPI adjustment request by Republic Services.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Adams, second by Commissioner Fleischer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. All right, with that, Commissioners, I appreciate you helping me getting through the first meeting. I had a big crowd in, in the audience for today's, for today's event, for my debut is, uh, running the meeting. And, uh, again, we, we hope that, uh, Commissioner O'Brien is, is on the mend and doing well, so he can get back. I know nobody misses this like he does, so.
Yes.
But other than that, uh, with this meeting, we'll stand adjourned.
Great job.
Fine job.